Okay, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of July 6, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is the hearing for the Maitland-Fathergill. This has been requested a postponement by the applicant's attorney, Stephen Sirdut. I had called him this morning to ask how many expert witnesses he had to come before us tonight so I can judge the time and see whether we'd have enough time for public comment. And he politely interrupted and said he wanted to do it face-to-face, so he's hoping to have this hearing postponed and rescheduled. So I'm not sure if, Lisa, Kevin, we need to reschedule that now. It's probably not something we can do, or we just wait for Attorney Sirdut?
Yeah, he indicated, this is Kevin McAlister, he indicated to me after he had made that request to you that he wanted it to be rescheduled at some unknown date down the road when we were back to normal meetings with the audience in the meeting room. So we clearly cannot set a new date tonight, and when a new date is selected, it will have to be re-advertised with the newspaper and the mail notices to the butters and all of that has to be all done at the applicant's expense. He understands that.
I'd like to comment, Mr. President. Scott Hillhurst, Vice President of Town Council, I'm a little disappointed because I know a lot of people are very interested in that proposal, and it would seem that that was the intention of the attorney and the applicant. They would have notified the town much quicker, and I know you have a lot of people that are interested in that project and this type of short notice. I just learned about this today, and I don't know if it's today they notified the town or it was earlier, but it's really inexcusable. If they wanted, considering the COVID-19 issue, they would have notified the town earlier if they wanted to have the type of hearing that they said they wanted, because everything is being operated differently, obviously, and I would have thought they would have given the town and the butters and all concerned a heads-up before now. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Scott. Sylvia?
This application first came in January 2019, so it's been a year and a half away. I'm not willing to do what the lawyer asked. We don't know when government's going to be opened up. What I want to do is pick a date tonight, perhaps whenever Lisa said she can get the advertising in appropriately, perhaps the end of the month, the last Monday of July, or the last, no, excuse me, I was looking at, yeah, the end of July, maybe that Monday, but Lisa will tell us. So I'm not willing to do that. I'm not, and I'd like the lawyer to know that this is it. There's no more extensions. There's this hearing coming up. I'd also like him to know that, this is my opinion, that he's got 90 minutes to do his proposal, and we've got 90 minutes for the public, and that's what I'd like to do.
I'd like to say, Mr. President, I agree with Counselor Thompson, and we got to put our foot down. This is nonsense. It's an insult to this honorable Town Council. It's an insult to the men and women of Hopkin and Red Island.
All right, I know. Yeah, Sharon?
I agree with Sylvia wholeheartedly, and I think we ought to pick a date tonight.
Well, again, yes, Barbara.
I understand Sylvia's perspective, and I certainly generally agree with it. What I would suggest doing is having a date set probably for August to give us all time, because I think that it is important for the citizens to be present at these meetings that involve them directly. But perhaps what we can do, since we can meet in large numbers if we have six feet apart and masks, we can use the auditorium at the high school and ask them to use that space. We can seat people six feet apart, and they can be at the meeting. And if there is a number that they may not go over, we can certainly accommodate that. But I think that if we're going to set a date, and I have no problems with that, because I do think it shouldn't drag on forever, but if they would like the public present, I think that may be one way that we can have the public present, we can do the meeting, and we can have them present. I don't know if we can legally tell them how much time they have and how much time we'll allow. I don't know if that's a possibility, since freedom of speech is on both sides, the developer and the council and the public. So I don't know if we can do that. But I do understand the need to try to have these things in public. We'll have the same problem on Shirensia, and if we can address this perhaps through an auditorium where we can separate people and it is allowed, I think that might be a compromise. But I would certainly agree, we would like to have it sooner rather than later, and we do not know when everything will open up, and we certainly would not have enough room in the council chambers to separate anyone, let alone have everybody sitting cheek to jowl. Thank you.
All right.
Frank, this is Kevin. Again, Kevin McAlister, Town Solicitor. Councilwoman Capaldo brings up a good point by asking about the legality of what we can do tonight and what we can't do, so I'd just like to address that before a motion is made. Clearly, the agenda tonight does specify that there may be a motion to continue the public hearing tonight. So if the council wants to do that by motion, they're perfectly free to do that tonight, because it's on the agenda. There's nothing on the agenda that says anything about limiting the applicant's rights or putting a time limit on a presentation. I would render the opinion tonight that that cannot be done consistently with the Open Meetings Act, because it's not posted on the agenda to consider a motion like that. Moreover, if the council wants to bring this up at another date before the new date for the public hearing to begin, it would have to post it on the agenda. I would think that that would have some legal issues that would have to be sorted out before you can just pick an arbitrary time limit for the applicant. They're entitled to make a reasonable presentation, and we'd have to work on that. But certainly, we can't, we cannot vote on, legally vote on a time limit tonight. So you can schedule a date certain tonight, however.
All right, so you said we can schedule a date, but not put a time limit, right?
That's why I didn't make the motion for a time limit.
All right. It seems like most of, if not all, the council is okay with trying to set a date. Attorney Sirdut is in the audience, so I guess we can look to set a new date. Lisa, is there any parameters that you need us to follow with that?
The only thing is that I do not know the availability of schools, number one, if they have limitations or requirements under the new COVID-19, number two. We need at least four weeks' time for me to get the advertisement to the paper, because it has to appear in the newspapers three occasions, one week apart, and then we have to prepare a butter notice as well, once that's all established. So seeing that it is July 6 now, you're into August.
Yeah, so August 3, you could probably do it. That's the first meeting.
Potentially, yes, depending on if I can get a school and what limitations there are with a school. I can't possibly inform you of that, because I don't know.
You can't do the 3rd. That's a regular council meeting, and I agree, I disagree with the school, because, I mean, we're limited on the number of people anyway. So I think we should have it on August 10. It's a Monday, and I have it here.
At the holiday.
Oh, it is? Oh, sorry.
Here's the holiday.
Oh, what's going on the 11th?
Why not a regular council meeting, the 17th?
That would be Victory Day.
August 3, we'd have a meeting.
I know, but let's do the 17th. If it's too late.
That's the second council meeting of August.
So what's wrong with that?
You want to pile others.
And you could do it on the 3rd.
Yeah, it's a regular agenda now. We were prepared for it tonight.
Oh, I guess, oh, the only thing I'm thinking is, sometimes these developers can take up to three hours.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, what I was going to do tonight was move up the rest of the business and then get to the hearing.
Okay, fine. All right, that's okay. So if you want to do the 17th?
I'm okay with the 17th.
I'm fine with that, depending on whether I have enough time.
Right.
Right. Now, should I not be able to get the school, what then?
Yeah.
I think this is Sharon.
No school, here.
Number one, the planning board has planning meetings where people can call in, and the planning board themselves get the drawings, they put them online, and they're doing all of that without going to the school. I think we can do the same thing for the town council meetings. So you don't necessarily have to be hung up with what the school says or doesn't say. And if you put the drawings, all the presentations that the developer was going to present, if they can be put online and put on our website so that anyone can go to it and see it, then I think we can move forward without being hung up with the school.
Again.
The application and the two maps.
I also think it would be.
Barbara, hold on, hold on, Barbara, please.
Sure.
Go ahead, Lisa.
We did have the application and two sets of maps posted on tonight's website for tonight's meeting as well. So yes, we can do that again for whatever date you choose.
And whatever the developer, whatever drawings that the developer was going to present, whatever data that they were going to present can also be put online ahead of time, so that the butters and everyone can access the information. If they have questions, they'll be able to do that at the meeting presentation, but you don't have to be hung up with the school.
Again.
I don't think it's necessarily.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I was going to say, I don't think it's necessarily being hung up. I think if there's an opportunity for us to incorporate and encourage the public to attend, because a number of people may not have computers and access, and they may really want to see it in real life, real person, and I think that's a democratic way of doing it, if we can do it. If we can't do it, then you're right, we can do it by phone. But it's difficult to put a, to point, I am talking. It is difficult to point to something that, it is difficult to point to something that you are confused about when you're not present. And at the planning board meeting, it was very difficult, when you asked your question, to figure out what the question was and where the answer was, because the map was different in two instances. And it was very difficult, and it took a great deal of time to try to answer the question, because nobody was there to point to a map. And we'd like it to be not more than three hours in length. So if we can do it, I think it's of benefit. If you cannot do it, then that's another story, and we can try another way. But it is not efficient over a phone and with a computer. There is nothing efficient about what happened at Planning Board last Wednesday.
I would, Mr.
Can I talk now?
Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay. Number one, the planning board members did not get one of those drawings, the first drawing. So they were just looking.
I listened to the entire meeting.
All right, so what I'm saying is, there was something that was missing anyway. So if they had got, if they had had the first drawing, they could have been able to compare the first drawing with the second drawing. That's why I said if they, plus, because I'm the planning board liaison, I get the same package that the planning board gets, so I can ask questions. But the butters and everybody else in the audience did not get that, and that's my point. If everything was put online so that everyone could get the same packet that, like, we would get as town council members, then everyone would be going from the same, you know, looking at the same data. And the other thing is, unless there's a vaccine, I am not going to be at that meeting, and there are a lot of people who are not going to be at that meeting, because they are afraid. And so if we can do it electronically, it would be much better.
Okay.
That's my point.
All right. Point well taken for Barbara and Sharon. Again, Attorney Sirdut spoke to me this morning and said that he prefers to do it in person because of the butter concerns and questions from residents. So I guess, you know, I guess tonight we need to just reset a date, and then if we can't meet face-to-face for COVID reasons, then we'll have to do it online, and that'll be that. So we'll give another date, I guess, and maybe Sylvia can introduce something.
I move that we continue the public hearing of Centra Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite TW, Hanover, Maryland, and Maitland-Fathergill, 16 Wallen Drive, Cumberland, for property located at 10A Crandall Lane, number B, in Ashway. And resume the public hearing on August 17 at the Town Hall.
Seconded.
Seconded at the Town Hall.
That's what she said, yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Yes, Kevin, go ahead.
We have not opened the public hearing tonight, so I'd be a lot more comfortable if the motion was rephrased to use the term "reschedule" the beginning of the public hearing as opposed to "continue it."
All right. I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll second that to the withdrawal.
All right. I move that we resume, excuse me, reschedule the public hearing for August 17 here at the Town Hall for Centra Business Solutions, Candlewood Suite, TW, Hanover, Maryland, and Maitland-Fathergill, 16 Wallen Drive, Cumberland, for property located at 10A Crandall Lane, number B, Ashway.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further council discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that it's not just that if people can't look at something online, they can make, they can call up Lisa, they can call up the planner, and they can make an appointment to come into the Town Hall if we still have restrictions, and they can look at all the documents they want. So anybody out there who may have an issue with looking at these things online, and I don't blame you, can make an appointment to come in before August 17 and see what the proposal is about. And the last comment would be to Lisa, if this is possible, Lisa, perhaps when you send out a notice, does it go from the planner's office or from Lisa's office, when you send out the little green cards with the notice of a hearing date to all the butters?
Comes from the town clerk's office.
Okay. I didn't know whether or not at that time, or maybe you've already done it, when you send this out to notify them, can you let them know the toll-free numbers and the meeting ID and give them that information, or is that premature?
No, I can include that.
Okay, that might be helpful for people to know that, for instance, a gentleman came tonight from the public, thinking that we were allowing the public to come into the council chambers, and he got sent home. So hopefully, he's been able to call in and listen. And thank you.
Unfortunately, the difficulty with all of this COVID information and the restrictions is trying to predict what the future is and what will be. It's been impossible.
All right. Any other comments from the council or the administration? We had a motion made and seconded for the 17th.
Hello, Frank?
Yes.
The answer was yes. Yeah, I would still like to see if we could at least have tried to have it in person. Anyone who does not wish to attend can still attend by phone, but I think if at all possible, we should try to do these big meetings, which involve a lot of people, in person.
Yeah, it's just tough with COVID, but that's okay. All right.
I understand it's tough with COVID, but it doesn't negate the public's right to see something and talk to people face-to-face or person-to-person. Because it's COVID, I'm not changing my entire life, you know, all the way around. I'm at least going to give it a shot.
All right.
Frank, what is the minimum amount of people that can meet in within one building now?
Bill is telling me 25.
All right.
25%.
That's ridiculous.
25 or 25%?
25.
This is Kevin McAlister. The latest, the phase-three limitation is 25 people indoors for this type of meeting.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
So to me, that would be, if there's 40 butters right there, you can't, you can't, they can't even come. So we absolutely must extend our electronic abilities so that every, and the developer needs to present his stuff early enough so that we could put it on our website, and people can see what his presentation is all about. I think that's reasonable. If he wants everybody to see it, then he ought to prepare it and have it ready, and then we're giving him till, if it's going to be August 17, he's got more than four weeks to get his act together. Thank you.
You know, I like to support the concept that Sharon, Counselor Davis, has. The bottom line is, we have a project that a lot of people are interested in, and if there's 40 butters, obviously, that's not going to be satisfactory meeting requirement, not counting those people who aren't direct to butters that have an interest in this matter. So that, I think the most practical thing is doing what Counselor Davis suggests, is having a call-in thing, unless a dramatic event happens between now and August that allows a larger number to participate. It's conceivable, maybe we could have those people, particularly all the people that aren't technologically savvy, maybe they could be allowed in, but I think from a practical point of view, what Counselor Davis says is the practical way to go, so that we don't, we also allow all those possible that participate.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So we had a motion made and seconded to reschedule this hearing to 8:17, virtual or non-virtual. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Barbara, no?
All those opposed?
All those opposed.
I'm waiting for you. Aye.
Okay. All right, the motion carries, four to one. Okay. All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approve special town council meeting minutes of June 25, 2020, town council meeting minutes of June 15, 2020, special town council meeting minutes of June 11, 2020, special town council meeting minutes of May 13, 2020, financial town assembly minutes of May 5, 2020, approve refund resulting from overpayment of 2019 real property taxes by the taxpayer submitted by the tax collector. Approve a seventh declaration of local emergency from July 6 through August 3, 2020. I need to pull the.
I'd like to pull all the meetings.
6:25.
For comment.
I could not hear what, there were two people talking, so could you explain what you want, please?
Okay, Counselor Hurst, I'd like to have all the meeting minutes pulled for comment.
I would like to pull June 25. It's Barbara Capaldo.
Thank you.
I wanted to pull the June 25 as well.
All right, I move that we approve, this is Sylvia, I move that we approve the refund resulting from overpayments of the 2019 real property taxes submitted by the tax collector.
Second.
Hey, motion made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have included, we can do one motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we approve the seventh declaration of local emergency from July 6 through August 3, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Hey, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Who wants to go first?
I'll go first, because I got, I guess, all of them. First of all, I like to, because I need to abstain, because I wasn't present at the annual financial town assembly, so I need somebody to make a motion, and I will abstain because I wasn't present at that meeting.
Can we, like, go through them, like, start with, in the order on the agenda?
Okay. The town council meeting on June 25, 2020, I just, on page one and two, Hope Valley, it's actually the Hope Valley Ambulance Squad, not association, and I know it's a small point, but Hope Valley Ambulance Squad is their name. That's the only problem I have with that.
All right, I have something for the 25th.
And so do I, so go ahead.
All right. Page two, first paragraph, last sentence, it says, Council President Landoff reported that there had been additional runs. There weren't additional runs, that's why they're running into cash flow issues, that there were limited runs by the ambulance corps.
And I would also like to deal with the first paragraph on page two. It's Counselor Capaldo doubted that this would be an ongoing expense. It is not, I did not say that, I said an ongoing issue. We have not used the contingency funds in full for many years. This was an anomaly because of COVID.
Okay.
So I would like that, I would like that explained. It was not that we would consider this an ongoing expense, or that we would always use the contingency in full. We had not done that for any number of years before that.
All right, anyone else?
That's all I have. Thank you, Frank.
Anyone else for the 25th?
Yeah.
Okay, Sylvia.
Sylvia, the issue of.
What page?
It's the first page of the 25th and others. In reference to the Ashway Ambulance Corps and the Hope Valley Ambulance Corps, it's not, it's, where Scott started, on page one, it refers to the Ashway Ambulance Corps and the Hope Valley Ambulance Corps. That's not meant to mean corporation. It's just, and it's not their legal name, it was, and by the way, whatever gets said at the meeting, whatever we, even if we're wrong, you can't correct the minutes. Let's suppose I called it Inc., and Scott said, oh, it's not Inc., it's an association. You can't, I said Inc., and so that's what the minutes have to reflect. Now, wait, Scott. I just wanted to point that out. If you make a mistake, then our minutes tonight would show that, let's say I made a mistake, and I, you know, I can correct myself, but I can't change the minutes. But when it says Ashway Ambulance Corps, it's like calling the Hopkinton Police a station. That's not their legal name. Does that make sense? But that's what got said.
I know what you're saying. You're saying exactly what is said, but actually, it's the Ashway Ambulance Association and Hope Valley Ambulance Corps.
So I just wanted to point that out. So they shouldn't be corrected.
I just want to point out what the names are. I don't know what was said, because I.
Hey, guys, let's not get in the weeds. I mean, come on, really?
Whatever.
It's just important not to change what occurred at a meeting, that's all.
I'll make a motion to approve special town council meeting minutes of June 25, 2020.
With corrections?
With corrections.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
No, I mean, I said aye to approve that.
Yes, yes. All right, we got June 15. Who wants to go?
The only one was, I thought, Scott at this point. Because he pulled all of them.
I think it omitted.
What page got?
I think it's, let's see.
Now, page one of the 15th doesn't have Sharon down. Sharon, were you there?
She showed up after the executive session.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
No, I think it said something about you not voting or something. That's what I picked up on. I can't remember that, when I was reading.
I have no idea what it is.
Scott, you got to make notations of what page. Scott, you got to make notations of what page, you know?
I usually do, and I, there's five council, or, five councillors, and then I didn't think it mentioned Thompson.
All right. All right, are we done with June 15th?
Yeah, I think it's all, we can go, if you want to skip while you look, Scott.
June 11th? What about June 11th, Scott?
I don't think I have any on June 11th.
You pulled them all.
I think that's the one that had five councillors, June 11th.
What page?
Why don't we just forget that?
Okay.
I can't find it.
All right.
I think it said like five councillors, and I think it omitted Thompson or something.
All right, special town council meeting minutes of May 13th? Which page got?
That would be page 16. Page 16.
Did you say 16?
Yes.
16?
They only go up to 10.
That's right, there's no 16.
Okay. On page five, it's councillor, not councillor, like if you're a lawyer, C-O-U and S-E-L-O.
What?
Sorry for that.
No spelling errors, let's, all right.
We're not doing typos.
Yeah, we're not doing typo. May 5th, 2020, what about that one, Scott? That's the financial town assembly. You weren't there.
I was going to abstain because I wasn't present.
All right, I think that's it.
All right, motion to accept the minutes of June 15th, town council meeting minutes of June 11th, special town council meeting minutes of May 13th.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve, motion to approve financial town assembly minutes of May 5th, 2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
No.
Scott, Bill, Hurst abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. And Barbara. And Scott. All right. All right, first public forum, anyone wishing to speak on anything on the agenda, just raise your hand and then state your name and address, and you've got 10 minutes, so, let's see. All right, I got to bear with me, folks. I got. You're on.
Hi, this is Jeff Light, 43 Forestline Drive, Old Valley.
Jeff, can't hear you.
Is this better?
No.
I can hear him.
I can't hear him.
Frank, can you hear me now?
I can now, thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Thank you for the time. I just want to say, I think it's personally ridiculous to base the town business on the desired type of a meeting by an applicant, of anything, solar or not. I mean, this application's been on the books here for a year and a half, and, you know, keep postponing this is just a clog of everybody's time. Also, just to make reference to the three councillors who clearly stated that their opinion, representing a large percent of residents, you know, that things are permitted to drag on, and that their opinions were completely disregarded. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Let's see. Next up, 575-0377.
Yes, this is Tim Ward. I live at 42 River Road, but I am also representing the abutter for 20 Amelia Street. And I am actually a trustee for that property. So, number one, I don't think it's fair to the abutters that were postponing this again. Again, it's been a year and a half, as was stated earlier by some of the council members. And the project manager and the attorney didn't seem to have a problem doing their presentation via the telephone for the planning board. So I can guess why they had a problem doing it tonight, but I'm not going to say that because I don't know for certain. And to call in at the last minute is just showing complete disregard for the abutters in the same way that the change of plans and the confusion at the planning board meeting led to a disregard for the abutters. And I would request, and I've asked the town council to do this in the past, and I, to my knowledge, this has not been enacted, I'm going to request again that the town council ask that the project managers and the attorneys for these solar projects put together a PowerPoint presentation for members of the audience, and whether that's because we're doing it on the telephone or we're in public, either way, a formal PowerPoint presentation via Google Slides or PowerPoint would be immensely helpful, and I don't just mean a copy of the map, I mean, an in-depth presentation that everybody can view in advance and know what they're talking about and be looking at while it's being discussed and have the information in front of them. I did talk to the attorney last Saturday about that when I met with him for this project in Crandall Lane, and he said, sure, I'd be glad to put that together for you, and he sends me a copy of the map. That's not a presentation. So, you know, I just finished teaching middle school students for three or four months online from home. It can be done. I'm telling you, it can be done. So, I mean, we need to get into modern age and start using and leveraging technology. And when we have these meetings in person, instead of having it on a two-by-three piece of cardboard that virtually nobody in the audience can make out, how about a presentation on a large screen that's interactive that everybody can make out? Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Hey, hey, Tim, what's your number? So I lost my order here.
Last.
Last four.
0377, the last four digits.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's a very good idea. Very good idea.
I think so, too.
Okay, next up is 648-5653.
How you doing? This is Rob Henninger, 24 Edgewood Avenue. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make a statement. I just, I find it kind of ridiculous that, you know, this company's being catered to, basically. Concessions are being made for them to keep bending the rules and being able to submit new presentations last second. I attended the planning board meeting and didn't even have the correct plans because this company can't get their act together, and now to call in and basically ask last second for continuation is not fair to the public. All us abutters are taking time out to call in, you know, if it is a case of where we do get to meet in person, we have to take time out of our day again to meet up to fight this. It's quite obvious that this isn't wanted in our town, and that this company especially seems to have a lot of issues with being able to do things correctly. It just leads me to believe that if this project is allowed to go through somehow, that we're going to have major issues and it'll be another Max and Hill all over again. So that's my opinion, and I hope the town council takes it into consideration. And, you know, I'll be calling in again or attending.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I believe, is, looks like I know that number, Joe Morrow.
Good evening, this is, good evening, this is Joe Morrow from Old Depot Road. I just want to mention something that both Chris and Lisa and others have done a great job with these meetings. When you initially call in and get the instructions from Zoom, it says to be unmuted, you have to hit asterisk six instead of nine. So for some new people, that may be confusing to them. The second point I want to bring up is that I want to thank Bill McGary, Jim Lanfair, and anyone else that's involved in the Stubtown Road landfill project, because I know that's on the agenda coming up. And the first person I know that was interested in that project was Newport Resources. The last thing I want to talk about is, when we were discussing Chase Hill Road, Chip Heil had mentioned about having person-to-person face-to-face meeting, and we could not do that because of the COVID and we set a date of August 3rd. The last thing I want to mention is, this attorney also represents the Shurenvia project. And for the residents that have been following that, we know it's been delay after delay after delay. And I agree, enough is enough with this. 18 months and we're looking for delay. The last point is, from what I understand and what I just heard, our council president, Frank Landoff, reached out and made a phone call because he had a question about the witnesses, and that's when he found out from the attorney. So I don't believe that, I could be wrong, but I don't believe that the attorney had called in to delay this. It was really Frank trying to get a clarification for the agenda tonight. So I agree 100%, enough is enough with this developer, with this attorney, not getting the information when they promised it. And I'm just guessing, but I would think that, again, if you guess, I don't believe the attorney was ready to make the presentation tonight based on what I've seen for other presentations. Could be wrong, but that's all I want to say. Thanks for your time, and everyone, stay safe.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, next up is, last four digits of the number 5348.
Thank you. Hello, hey, good afternoon, good evening, council, this is Cherry DeJarden. I'm here, I've been listening to this in response to the Fawgill Solar Site. Just have to put my two cents in and say, never even got a zoning certificate for this. Never got anything for this.
All right, well, we'll.
Well, I'd like to thank Cherry for letting us know because it's very obvious, and normally we don't respond during public forum, but that shows a blatant disregard for the town government of Hopkinton, Rhode Island, and us personally, and somebody should say that because that's, this whole thing is pathetic, actually.
There are also, like, property, property, brand, property code maintenance issues. We've gotten complaints on this, and there were brand property code maintenance issues on this property that we've tried to address and sent letters to the Fawgils and have been danced around, so to speak. So I'm not sure how this has gotten to development plan review at this point. No.
Well, let's, all right. Cherry, what's the last four digits of your number again, please?
5348.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll have the town planner, manager, or solicitor look into that. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, number ending in 9568.
Hello, my name is Don Coleman, I live at 946 Main Street in Hope Valley.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to say that I agree with Mr. Henninger and others that this company seems like they don't have very much respect for our time or our town. And I think that instead of enabling them and letting them keep dragging this out, we should do as Mrs. Capalbo said, and set a deadline where they have to submit all the articles or whatever they have to submit, or they're going to have to start the process over again. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. It looks to be no more hands in the waiting room, waiting room. Thank you all. Next up is, under my report, Chairhold Budget Referendum Outcome. I think everyone knows that the Chairhold School Budget was passed by our town, as well as Richmond and Charlestown. But, you know, again, I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of the council, the town administration, for charting our own path to getting this budget voted on by the taxpayers and residents of our town, and having enough time to set our own tax rate and tax levy. So I couldn't be more proud of the people that made that happen, and I want to say thank you. Next up on the new business, number one, discuss considering possibly vote to adjust off uncollectible taxes for tax years 2004 to 2009 for the total amount of $11,172.72 submitted by the tax collector. Now, Mary Lynn, our tax collector, is on the line. Should I just hand it over to her? All right, let me find my friend, Mary Lynn. Bear with me one second. Mary Lynn, are you 7421?
I am.
Okay, you have that, go ahead, please.
Okay, so basically what we're doing is, I need to write off the old years, as you know, we can't collect past 10 years, so these are 10 years and older, so then that's why I'm asking to be written off.
Okay, thank you. Council, have any questions for Mary Lynn?
I just thank her for working as tax collector, and if it's acceptable, I can make a motion that the recommendations, help by the tax collector be approved.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further council discussion?
Yes, Frank?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
I just want to know, is the write-off in our budget? You know what I mean? Do we have extra money to write that off? You know what I mean?
Well, we can't collect it because it's more than 10 years old, there's a state law in the books, so we can't collect it anyway.
I know, I just want to know if it's in the budget, if we have a budget line for that, or.
No.
No, it's my knowledge, no.
I doubt it.
Okay, I just, that's just FYI information only.
Yeah, as far as I know, well, we have an uncollectible.
Hold on, Barbara, hold on, yes, Mary Lynn.
I think there is, isn't there an uncollectible? I don't have a budget in front of me. Yeah, isn't there? No?
No, but what we do is that, I'll wait, Frank.
Yeah, Barbara, wait, Mary Lynn, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, Barbara.
We don't, we don't have, I don't believe we have an, we don't have an uncollectible, but what we do have is when we say how much will be collected from the tax rolls, it's .97. So we have a 3% that we know may not be collected, so we do account for it. Sometimes we may get, it might be .96, .97, .98, but we always leave a percentage because we know there is a certain percentage that will not be collected. Although we may collect others in other years, so it is covered, but in a, you know, relatively minor amount, which certainly the $11,000 is unfortunately a minor amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We had a motion made, I believe, and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, thanks all. Okay, next up, number two, discuss considering possibly vote to authorize the town of Hopkinton to reissue a request for proposal for competitive bidding to possibly lease to one or more private developers the former town landfill site parcel located at Zero Stubtown Road and designated as Assessor's Platte 13, Lot 27, Phase 2, the new section, owned by the town of Hopkinton in order to study, design, and possibly construct a photovoltaic solar energy systems solar installation on the site. Bill, you want me to just hand it right over to Jim?
Sure.
Okay, Jim Lanfair, come to the mic, those are hot mics, you can just talk right into it. Yeah, it might be easier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jim Lanfair, Hopkinton Town Planner. Jim Lamphier, Hopkinton Town Planner. This agenda item was prompted by a discussion that we had with the Department of Environmental Management, Mr. Mark Denon, and Chris Karns from the Office of Energy Resources on June the 22nd. And during that conversation, it was suggested by the Office of Energy Resources that, in an effort to facilitate the development of that landfill site for a solar array, that what we should do is, as soon as possible, send out an RFP and enter into some sort of a relationship with a solar developer. So, you know, in the interest of establishing a solar array there, which the town has been talking about for several years now, we initially approached DEM to get a meeting of the minds as to where that landfill stands at the present time. They came back, and they gave us a list of seven items that the town needed to do to bring that into compliance. One of the items was to repair the damage to the cap that's there. The other six items are being, are being done. We are monitoring the gas emissions, methane gas. We are monitoring the groundwater. We've prepared an environmental land use restriction, and all of that material has been provided to the DEM, and that's where that sits right now. There's a few other items that the town probably should do on its, could do on its own. We have to go out there and clear some existing vegetation, which is on the top of the cap. We need to restore the sediment basins, which are around the toe of the slope at the base of the cap. They've been covered in over time, so they need to be opened up. And so those, six of those seven items the town can do on its own. It's recommended that, as far as repairing the cap, that would be an activity more appropriate to a solar developer, because even if we were to go ahead and repair it, they would probably rip it up entirely when they go to place their solar arrays on top of it, with the type of equipment that they need to go up the slope and everything. So that's, that's what Mr. Hoffman, I spoke to today, Hoffman Engineering, he's, that's been his experience. So it makes sense to have the cap work done by a solar developer. So in that, in that vein, I believe, I would agree with the Office of Energy Resources and DEM, that we should, to show sincerity on the part of the town of Hopkinton, that that is, in fact, what we intend to do, establish a solar array on the site, that a relationship with a solar developer would go a long way showing that. And also, it would, it would enable the town to put, to transfer the cost that we are incurring on a daily basis with that landfill to a solar developer. For example, whether we go forth with a solar array or not, we are going to have to maintain that in compliance with the state. And that's going to mean quarterly, right now, it's quarterly groundwater monitoring at $2,500 a quarter, just to monitor the quality of the groundwater. We are going to have to, there's other costs associated with it as well. We have to maintain the cap in its present condition, and just keep it up in compliance. So that, in my view, we have an asset here, which is certainly non-performing. You could probably go so far as to claim that it's a liability, it's a cost. And what I think we need to do as a town is to get a solar array in place, which will serve to generate revenue, with which we can maintain compliance on that cap, and probably accumulate some funds, which, which will enable us to deal with the Phase 1 landfill, which is still out there, and still has never been closed out ever. So I think it's in the town's best interest to establish a revenue generating facility out there, so that we have some funds to do what we need to do. I don't think this is something that we can walk away from at this point. When we, when we made our initial moves toward investigating the establishment of a solar array, we got involved with DEM. And we're not, you know, the genie is out of the bottle at this point. They're not going to let us, they're going to hold us to the letter that they, that they sent us. So we're going to have to do those things at a minimum, and then additional things to prep the site for a solar, which, that would be taken care of in the RFP with the developer. So I would suggest that we take the advice of the people who are working with us at the state level. These people, these people are working shoulder to shoulder with us toward our goal that we established of getting an array out there. So while we have the people like Chris Karns at OER, who can help us with develop this RFP, based upon their experience, while we have DEM on board, who's going to be watching over this to make sure that we're moving in the proper direction, it's going to show these people a great deal of faith that we are endeavoring to get right on board with a solar developer. So I would suggest that we take their advice, work with them, and put out the RFP and see what we can attract.
Thanks, Jim. Sylvia Thompson.
This is exactly what we discussed years ago, before DEM and before, I'm glad the state agrees with, with us. But I had a meeting with, it was Tony Del Vicario. I asked his help, because he was a developer of solar, before we even had solar in town, or any. We met with him, and I believe Bill was there, and, well, the three of us, and I, it may have been, I don't know if you were there, Jim. But anyway, we had a meeting with Tony Del Vicario, and specifically, he had, the issue with, the reason I went to him is because of his experience with solar. But I wanted to know, and we looked at all the town properties, and the only two properties that we came up with that looked like it was feasible to put solar on was the dump, of course, and right back here behind the town hall. Now, behind the town hall, there's about 19 acres, but there's wetlands back there, so you would have less. And so we left that alone, and just concentrated on the landfill. And the whole idea, which Tony was able to look at the property and made some recommendations to us, but the, the idea was, is that you go out to bid, you make the solar developer do all the work, basically, and they'll bid on it, and then they reap rewards, and we get money, you know, you can do the lease route, there's a variety of different avenues you can take. But this all started with Tony Del Vicario, and me, and Bill, talking about how we, the town can't, couldn't do solar on our own. We really need a person to come in with experience, and they're going to make out, because they're going to have a profit, the town will have a profit, we'll get the landfill in shape, and is it all rosy? No, but it, it works, and that's the only way we can get it done, is exactly what Jim talked about, to have, put it on the owners of the solar developer to do much of the work, as much as we can, so that the town doesn't do it, they do it, we end up with solar, they end up with a project that's done, they end up with profit, and we end up with monitoring wells that we don't have to, we'll have a revenue. I don't know what that revenue would be, but Tony, I'm not going to, and I'm not going to say what he told me, but let's just say it's a significant amount of money for the town to help pay for the closing of the landfill and the closing of the next one. So, it's a win-win for the town. So absolutely, this is what we should do. And I'm glad the state of Rhode Island agrees with what we thought we should do in the first place.
Okay, thanks, Sylvia. I'm just going to get to the rest of the council. Yeah, Barbara, hey.
I also agree with Sylvia. I think it's a good idea to take a look at this. I'm glad Jim Lamphier and Bill McGarry are working toward that. I think that's the right way to go on this particular property. And I'm very glad that it would be going out as an RFP, so that we can take a look at a number of different solar companies. My only concern with Mr. Del Vicario is that he is the primary start of Maxon Hill, which is not going well. Our other projects went a lot more smoothly. So I am glad that it is an open process for us to take a look at a number of solar developers, and how they have performed in other areas. So I do agree with Sylvia, I think it's a great idea. Jim, I'm glad you really took a look at it and worked toward it. Thank you, Bill. I think that's fine, I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Okay, Sharon, anything on this?
I agree, this is about the only one that I would be for. I just wanted to ask Jim Lamphier, do you have any idea how many megawatts you're thinking that would provide?
Not at this time, Sharon. What we'd like to do is maximize the site to the extent we can, but that will be, we'll get a better idea on that when we get the responses back from the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Scott, do you have anything for this application, this motion?
All I can say is, it's been many years since that, the town landfill or dump, as we call it, has been closed, and I remember the old one on Woodville Road, and many years ago, when I was a lot younger, and this is really the only potential you really have for a landfill for practical use, and plus solar. There's really not much you could do with a property, and I'm certainly receptive to the idea. But that's probably unusual for me to speak in favor of solar, but in that case, I would be receptive to it, and I understand Counsel Davis' feelings.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Oh, I just wanted to add, mentioning Tony Del Vicario, I'm not suggesting he do it, or I'm not suggesting anyone do it, I'm just suggesting that way back when, when we needed advice, he gave it to us, and this is what he recommended. That's all I was saying. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with it. Bill, you have some comments on the, on the agenda item?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick points. I agree 100% with what Jim Lamphier said, and everybody else, as far as moving forward with this project. If we don't, it's going to be very expensive for the town to, to square away Phase 1 and also Phase 2. But I think it's important to make a note of two issues. The first one is going to have to require a zone change. The property is zoned RFR 80, and it's going to have to be required, zone change will be required to commercial or commercial special. And the second thing is, there's kind of a general misunderstanding out there, that because it's a solar project on town property, that there's an exemption in the ordinance for that, and there is not. It would have to go to the planning board, and all the other specific aspects of the ordinance would apply, and then it would have to go from the planning board over to the town council. So I think, in the long run, I fully support it. I agree with Jim Lamphier. It's a good thing for the town to do, it's a revenue producer, otherwise it's going to be very, very expensive. But I just wanted to let everybody know that it's going to require a zone change.
Oh, and by the way, in the ordinance, the solar ordinance, there are exemption, town exemptions. Town land is exempt from certain aspects, certain aspects. I don't, I don't remember them, but I specifically remember when we amended it, we made sure that we put in that the town properties were exempt in certain aspect. And there was an air, there was a section where it was exempt.
There is a section.
Just a section. And I'm trying to remember what it was.
There is a section for exemptions, and I'll read it to you. It's, it's not, it's not crystal clear. It says, "The planning board shall have the authority to waive and/or modify any of the provisions of this ordinance within their review process for PSES located on town-owned properties." So there's no specific exemption for solar installations on town properties. That's my opinion.
Right, oh, no, 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 the words are the words, but somewhere in there, I thought there was something about town-owned property, and it's not important for now. Whatever requirements there are, the town will adhere to, you know.
Right, so you guys want to entertain a motion in a second to get this moving?
Move that we authorize the town of Hopkinton to issue a request for proposals for competitive bidding to possibly lease to one or more private developers the former town landfill site parcel located on Zero Stubtown Road and designated as accessories plat 13 lot 24.
27.
Oh, excuse me.
27.
Plat 13 lot 27, Phase 2, the new section, owned by the town of Hopkinton, in order to study, design, and possibly construct a photovoltaic solar energy system.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, number three, discuss and consider setting a hearing date for a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance district use table filed by Albert I. Hawkins, 20 Laurel Avenue, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891, for property located at 813 Main Street, identified as accessories plat 14 lot 47, a manufacturing zone to add a use category entitled Medical Marijuana Compassion Center, State of Rhode Island Regulate. Lisa, I'm not sure when we can do this, what are your thoughts?
Well, that is a zoning ordinance amendment as well, so advertising and a notice to about it is required. I believe you're well into August. You have got a hearing on July 20th. We have two hearings on July 20th, one for a new liquor license, and one for an amendment to the Zero Main Street ordinances. Then on August 3rd, you have another hearing, it's a continued or resumed hearing for Centrica and Shirendia. So, and then you're at August 17th, where you just rescheduled our, the matter that was on for the Centrica and Fothergill matter, so.
Can we move it to September?
And
I don't see where this is crucial.
Right.
It's too bad we don't have an ordinance that just lets us say no, and we don't have to have hearings.
Something to consider in September is your normal meeting
Is the 7th, it's a holiday.
Is the 7th, and that is a holiday. So typically, what we do is we set the Tuesday as your meeting, but that's problematic, because that's the primary day. So what has been suggested is perhaps having it the previous Tuesday, the 1st.
I've got a question for Kevin. This is Sylvia.
Yeah.
Kevin, my question is, okay, we're in July, we have a number of hearings coming up, and there'll be more, I'm sure. Is this something that we can let the next council do? I just wonder legally, no, is that, is that something you can do?
Well, I think, I think the applicant, this is Kevin McAllister, I think the applicant's entitled to begin the process at the next available date to the council. I think since it's a zoning amendment, it has to go to the planning board for an advisory opinion before the council meeting. And I wouldn't try to time it around the new council, because as we learned the last election cycle, even if the process has begun with, with the old council, the new, the new council can pick it up, as long as the new members get themselves up to speed. So I'd be more concerned about a date where the planning board could, could hear it first for the advisory opinion before it comes before the council.
I get an idea.
This is Jim.
Hold on one second, Barbara.
This is Jim Lamphier.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I was going to say, just as Jim Lamphier's still present, because he might know what the schedule is for the planning board.
Well, again, before we get to that, why don't we just pick a date? How about the second meeting in September, 9/21? That should give everybody enough time.
Fine, honey.
I'd rather not meet on a separate day for this thing. Okay, what about Sharon?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Sharon?
9/21 is fine.
Okay. 9/21?
It's my husband's birthday.
What's that?
It's my husband's birthday, but we can do it.
We'll promise to get over quick.
Okay.
No, Scott, Monday, 9/21. All right, so you think that's okay, Jim? 9/21 should give planning board?
August 2nd.
Okay. Okay. August 5th, the planning board advisory opinion. Okay. All right. So is everybody in agreement with 9/21 for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, discuss and consider setting a hearing date for a Class C liquor license filed by Norbert Anse Jr. for property located at 999 Main Street, identified as Accessors Platte 27 Lot 102, a neighborhood business zone. Can we do that on the same?
I've got a question for Sherri. Does, Jard?
The Jardins.
Thank you. Sherri, if you're on, online, are you still here?
I don't know her number. I muted everybody.
Okay, just a minute. Maybe Sherri's still there. My question, if Sherri's still there, my question is, I just wondered in general if she had a feel for how much time she needed. It doesn't seem complicated to me, but I mean, maybe a half hour. I don't know.
Oh, I think that's her.
Cell phone is 9676.
I got a 595.
So I don't think it's going to take very long, and I don't see a need to push it out months because you don't need hours to do it. It could, it could get included in an August.
What was the number, Bill?
Yeah, I agree with Sylvia. I think we can do it sooner rather than later.
And Lisa, anything, anything required for advertising of any type on this item?
Yeah. There are two weeks, two weeks advertising notice and probably notice to a butters by regular mail, I believe. So if you scheduled it for August 3rd, you should, that would be plenty of time.
Okay, let's do that.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, August 3rd. Okay.
August 3rd.
All right. That sounds good. Number five, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to establish an annual filing fee for a Class C liquor license consistent with Sections 3-7-8B, which allows a minimum of $400 to a maximum of $800 prorated for the year ending December 1st in every calendar year. Might as well do it the same night, right? Oh, no, this is, I'm sorry.
I don't know if Kevin maybe is, or Lisa, what are they, what are the fees in town for other classes? Are they 400?
Well, this is Kevin McAllister. This is designated by state law, which authorizes a fee for between 400 and 800. So that's the parameters that the council has to work with.
Again, this is Frank. Go ahead, Barbara.
And, and if we set a fee, because it's 400 to 800, I would assume that might have to do with the size of the, the business. So if we set, do we have to set a definitive or do we have a choice every time someone comes up to decide if it's 400, 600, or 800? Or do we have to make it across the board?
I believe you have to set the fee. We have not had a Class C before. We have two Class As, we have Class BVs, and we have Class B Limited. We used to have a Class D club, but no longer. And the fees vary from $1,500 down to, I think it's 825. So Class C, I provided a copy of the law. I believe they are limited to, they don't serve food other than prepackaged food, and they could heat up things on the premises. So the size of, or of the location is something I cannot address because I'm not quite certain what the space limitations are. That would be something that the owner would have to advise of. But the range is between 400 and 800.
Again, I'm of the opinion that businesses are already taxed enough, and we should go on the low side of $400 for this Class C license.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to.
Well, I'd like to talk.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Well, he can make his.
I thought we were discussing first, right?
You can always discuss.
I would like to err on the 800 and period. I would not, not make it subject to the size of the business.
Mr. President.
That's just my opinion. I think it should be one fee for everyone.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the minimum of $400 be enacted for a Class C liquor license in the town of Hopkinton.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made.
Yes. Three, that we want to ease on local businesses. And the lower end is.
You're kind of breaking up.
We're having a problem hearing you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I just got a pop-up saying the internet connection was unstable, but it looks like it's gone away.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't know what we charge. Is there any, Lisa, is there any license that's, other Class C that's charged less than $100?
You're breaking up again.
She asked if any, any other lic, liquor license fee that was less than $100.
Less than 400?
Correct.
You're breaking up. Sorry, I'm.
Sylvia had asked if there's any license, liquor license that's less than $400, whether it's A, B, C, or D.
Less than or more than?
Less than, less than.
No, there are none less than.
None less than, okay.
Okay.
That's all over 800, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we had a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on this, setting the, the amount for the Class C license? Having heard none, all those in, all those in favor of?
Wait a minute. This is Sharon. I, I, I still want to reiterate that I think it should be 800. If, if right now, the lowest rate is 850, going 800 for the Class C is, is also being less, but it's still helping the town. So I still go for 800. That's, that's just my comment.
That's fine.
Mr. President, I support the $400. This is a filing fee for a Class C liquor license, and if ever needs to be modified, certainly we can do it. I think $400, the minimum is appropriate, and I will vote for the motion I made. Thank you.
Okay. Any further? Yes, Barbara?
Yeah. So Lisa, the 800 and 50 is for which liquor license?
I don't have that information home with me, unfortunately.
All right. So but you do think that, yeah, but you do think that the larger, the 1,500 is for the higher amount?
That's B Limited. That's for one of the B Limited. Yeah. That's very high.
Right, I agree. And then the next one, because we don't have this one, I think it is appropriate that we go lower than the 800. Otherwise, the 800 and the 850 are far too close. So I would like, I would suggest that we stay at 500 instead of 400 so that we have some variation and we have places to move.
You can always change it, Barbara, so.
I'm, I'm with, Mr. President.
You made your motion.
We got to vote on the 400 first.
All right. So we had, we have a motion on the floor and seconded for $400 for a Class C license. All those in favor of the Class C $400 license fee signify by saying aye.
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 All those, okay, that's four. And Sharon, all those not in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four to one, the motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Next up, number six, discuss and consider setting a hearing date for consideration of a proposed amendment to Chapter 229 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Hopkinton in specifically Section 19-2B1A of Chapter 19, Taxation, Article 1, entitled "When Interest Waived, Introduced, and Sponsored by Council President Landolphe," the proposed amendment would correct a typographical error in the reference to Rhode Island General Law's Section 19-21B1A, where it reads Rhode Island General Law's Section 44-5.8-1, and substitute that for citation Rhode Island General Law Sections 44-5-8.1. In addition, the proposed amendment, if enacted, would add the words "our place of business" after the word residence and before the phrase "of the taxpayer" found in Section 19-21B1A of Chapter 229. The purpose of this proposed amendment would be to extend to taxpayer-owned places of business the opportunity to seek a waiver payment for one quarter's worth of interest on one overdue quarterly tax payment, subject to the same conditions currently applicable to taxpayers' personal residences. So the reason this item is on the agenda tonight is I sponsored and got passed in March of, I believe, 2013, about seven years ago. And what this, what this tax interest waiver is, is if a resident misses a tax payment for whatever reason and hasn't been late on their taxes in the last five years, we'll grant the, the interest waiver. It can only happen every five years. You have to be a resident of the town, I think, for, for the last five years. So it's, it's very minimal in terms of what the town doesn't get, but I think it, it does appreciate if somebody does miss for whatever isolated reason. And, and the reason I, I wanted to bring it to the council's attention is that for businesses, I was out with my wife at Wood River, Wood River Golf and the 11th Green Restaurant in Hope Valley. I was having dinner, I think, two weeks ago when they first opened up, and the owner, Kate Thompson, had come to my attention asking me if I had a minute. So I said, sure. And we chatted, and she said, you know, I pay almost, almost $60,000 a year in taxes, and we missed our, our March payment. We had to pay about a $200 late charge, and is there anything that can be done? And, and I didn't know at that point in time whether the ordinance that I sponsored and ultimately got passed, whether that transferred also to businesses. And I think it's been determined through the town manager, town solicitor, that it does not. So that's the reason I wanted to bring this forward. Again, not a lot of revenue missing by the town to have this extend to businesses. I think it's, it's certainly important, especially this time of year with the COVID-19 and all the impacts that this particular business has had. They, they can't have a lot of people in the restaurant. It's just, it's devastating. So I'm hopeful that the council would support me on this. And it's, it's, I think the right thing to do, and it's, anyway, so I hope you guys and gals support me. Yes, Scott?
Set the hearing, set a hearing date, really not to get in discussion.
No, no, I mean.
No, not you, Scott. You're, you're supposed to introduce it, but we don't really get into it. Let's just set a hearing date.
Correct. Let's just set a hearing date.
So I wanted, I wanted the council.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I just want the council to know why, why it's on the agenda, though.
No, I, I thought that was a, a good idea. But how about August 6th, August 3rd? Can we put that on?
Too soon for Lisa.
I don't know, Lisa. What are your thoughts?
Well, I believe because this is regular Code of Ordinances, the applicability that zoning regulations and amendments to zoning does not apply. So I think a minimum of one advertisement, unless I'm incorrect, would be in order. So you could potentially hear this on July 20th.
Let's do it.
Mm-hmm. That's fine then. As long as that's not an imposition for Lisa. She's got a lot to do for July 20th.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
Sharon, you okay with that date?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Okay, so July 20th it is. Thank you all. Sorry for my long-winded explanation. I just wanted to convey, convey the message.
Okay. I appreciated the explanation, Frank.
Thank you, thank you. Boards and commissions, number one, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Phil Scalise as alternate to the zoning board of review.
Who's the, who's that guy?
Lisa, do you want to just?
And actually, in all, in all fairness, it's a point. He's been off the board for a couple of, a couple of years. So appoint is the more correct term than reappoint. I'd like him to think of himself as starting fresh. I know he has. He served before for decades, I think. But he's, you know, he's been off, so now he can start the next decade, which is fine with me.
So Scott, your motion was to appoint Phil Scalise.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and state I move that we appoint Philip J. Scalise as an alternate member of the zoning board of review.
Second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. Lisa, can you just, for the public's information, just explain, well, how this came about? I, I know there's a conflict with at least, I think, two zoning board members, and Phil needs to kind of fill that gap, right?
Yes. I can read from Liz Monti's. So bear with me. As of late, the zoning board finds itself in a difficult predicament. Being short one alternate member, the board is unable to move forward with a recent petition for expansion of a commercial building along Alton Bradford Road. In order for a petition to move from pre-application status to hearing status so that a decision can be made, five members must sit for the hearing. The board finds itself short one member to be able to accomplish this task as two members have conflicts of interest with the petitioning party. One party is related to the applicant, and the second party has performed work for that applicant. This is not an uncommon matter in a small town like Hopkinton. Therefore, the board asks for the assistance of the town council to appoint prior zoning board chairman Phil Scalise to the position of alternate zoning board member at the earliest convenience, so that he may assist in this task at hand. Mr. Scalise's many years as Hopkinton's police commissioner and Hopkinton zoning board chairman show consistent service on his behalf. The zoning board would be honored to see his return of, albeit merely on a limited capacity of alternate. The zoning board asks that the town council kindly consider this reappointment at your next meeting so that the petition currently in front of the board for the expansion of the building at Marino Auto Works may continue for the next scheduled zoning board meeting. Time is of the essence, as the next zoning board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 16th at 7:00 PM. Please contact the zoning board clerk with any questions to be referred to the zoning board. Thank you. And signed by Elizabeth Monti.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. All right, do we have a second with Scott's motion?
We already did.
Okay. So we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor of appointing?
By the way, I, I have to slip in here in case Phil's listening. I tried, I tried to get him to run for town council, and I think he kind of laughed and said, no, 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 thank you. You know, he's very polite. But we got him back. I mean, he's, I know he's on the police commission, but we got him back, and he's back on the zoning board of review, at least for a little while. Thank you, Phil.
I will say.
Indeed. We really appreciate it.
I, I, Phil's one of my closest friends, and I actually did serve on the town council many years ago, decades ago. And so I keep in close contact with Phil Scalise.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. No further comments by the council? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thanks. Okay, last public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? All right.
Mr. President.
Hold on one second, Scott. Hold on. Okay, 537-8222.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau, Old Depot Road. And I just want, hi, I wanted to mention this. Myself and Jim Lanfor spent quite a bit of time two years ago discussing the New Stubtown Road. And I spoke to one particular developer, and there's an interest there because it was only .910 of a mile from three-phase power. The other point was, I believe there were two houses there that I passed. And once you pass the last house, there are no longer any homes. So you would not pass the solar and then go to a home. And the other thing that was interesting is, I won't mention their name, but there's a family that owns from a budding property where the developer was trying to tie in both of those projects together so that it would be a good-sized solar array. The last point I want to get back to, at the planning board meeting, Jim Lanfor had a question whether or not the Crandall Road, Fargo Hill, really fell under the grandfather clause. And I wasn't going to mention this until Sherri had spoken up, and I'm glad she did. I spoke to a member of the council who was checking into it to see, and the thought process was that the overall size, square footage-wise, hadn't changed on the project, so it probably would not be under, you know, it would still be under the grandfather. so it probably would not be under, you know, it would still be under the grandfather clause, because they didn't increase the lot size, so that is to be determined. But I think Sherri now brings up some valid points and opens up a whole other can of worms that we were not aware of, and it gets back to the whole process, and eighteen months we find out that there's issues with zoning, so I'm sure the town council will do their due diligence and really check into this, because I wondered now, in fact, is it under the grandfather rights, or is it a new project? And falls under the ordinance of January 22nd, 2019. Thanks for your time, have a good evening.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of the late Helen Tella, who was living out west, but she, for many years, was a well-known figure in the Ashway area.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thanks, council, Lisa, Kevin, Bill. Thank you all, thank you all for attending. Have a good night, thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.